So, we're gonna call toward our meeting that you saw Meadow Public Schools School Committee Meeting, regular scheduled meeting, May 12, 2014, 7:00 PM. Remember, this meeting is being both audiotaped and videotaped. Thank you. We're gonna stand for the pledge allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great. Okay, we're gonna start with roll call, starting on my left.
Elizabeth Marcinbacher.
Gregory Thompson.
Rich Ficero.
Deirdre Mayu.
Gordon Smith, Superintendent Schools.
Bill Fonseca.
Dariola Jerris, Assistant Superintendent for Business.
Kathy Salati, Organ Secretary.
Ari Rachi, Student Representative.
Awesome. And speaking of Ari, we want to honor you this evening. We have a little recognition for you and all the work that you've done for us this year. We hope you've enjoyed being here with us on School Committee.
I have. You made me feel very welcome.
And in honor, they've gotten you a little plaque to show it to you.
Oh, wow. That's amazing.
Turn it around.
Take it home.
Oh, bring that to school with you.
Put it in your locker.
Show it to him on tonight.
I don't think the lockers are wide enough for it.
All right, thank you so much. Congratulations. Good luck in college. And again, we just mentioned that you've been awesome.
[applause]
All right, so we have your full of some minutes. We have the regular session meeting minutes. Anyone wanna make a motion?
Make a motion?
I have, Rich.
I make a motion to approve the regular session meeting minutes of date 28, 2014.
Okay, motion made by Rich.
Second.
Seconded by Bill. Any discussion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, please say nay. That carries forward, 5-0. Thank you. All right, we also have some executive session meeting minutes to approve. Want to make a motion?
Move that we accept the April 20, 2014, executive session meeting.
Okay, Beth made the motion. Anyone second?
Second.
Rich? Okay, motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none. Let's take a vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Hearing none, that carries forward, 5-0. All right, we have committee and subcommittee communications. Ari, we'll start with you on this.
Thank you. A few weeks ago, the Environmental Club organized an assembly to come to the schools, educate the whole community about climate change, and kind of broke down the scientific aspects into simpler terms so we could all understand. It was open to any teacher that wanted to bring their class down, so we reached all grade levels. And it was sort of a combination of a PowerPoint slash video and a live speaker. It was very informative, so, and we received a lot of good feedback afterwards. Also, last Wednesday, or no, sorry, when, the 8th was the awards night, as you just mentioned, at the high school. And members of the school committee were all three recipients, presenters, and parents of recipients. So, that was really cool. It breached everyone. And then also, the high school had their last concert, so all the seniors who would be leaving just had their last concert with the band chorus.
I like those concerts.
What's the prom at Aria?
Oh, boy. The log cabin?
The when? When is it?
Oh, when, it is Thursday, the 29th.
And graduation is at Sunday, June?
Yes, June 1st.
1st.
Two o'clock.
Ready for next weather.
I know.
I attended the high school concert last Wednesday night. JP and Carol Forward did an excellent job as usual. It was a very enjoyable night, very good concert. You can, you can still see progress from September to May, and it's, it's always enlightening to see that stuff. Also, attended the student awards the next night, and as Ari said, it was a very good ceremony. Congratulations to all the students who received awards, especially our own Ari, who did quite well, and congratulations, well deserved.
Thank you.
One more item is the most improved vocational student of 2014. These awards were handed out by the LPVAC this past week, and automotive technology PM Session, Thomas Keat from East Long Meadow, received most improved vocational student award for automotive technology, as I just said. Congratulations to them.
Beth, do you have anything you want to?
Yes, actually, Mountain View School students had a contest for, to create anti-bullying poetry. And Ellie Mara and Julianne Boyt were two students who participated, and they won the statewide, the statewide.
Statewide?
Yeah, that's what I heard.
Fantastic.
Yeah, so they're two great little girls. I know them well, and.
The soccer players, too.
They are, indeed.
It's up on the district webpage.
I was just gonna mention that. It's up on the district.
You wanna take a look at the pictures?
And also, on this Thursday, if anybody's hungry, in the Eve. ELEAF is gonna be having an event where 10 percent of the proceeds at the Texas Roadhouse will go directly to the ELEAF Endowment. You can go on their website and copy the letter that you have to bring. And it is not a free environment, but it is still a good time. The golf event is June 2nd. It's $35 if you just like to go to dinner in the evening, or it's $135 to play, and then you could do a foursome, too. So, with the, for people attending that. And then everything else that happened this week was great, too. It was, it was very busy. There's a lot happening.
There's a lot going on right now, too.
It was. That was a nice time.
All right, Greg, do you have anything to share with us?
Just the one update, that the bid has been awarded for the tennis courts, and that project will begin shortly. We will have six new tennis courts in the same exact spot as the current ones are, better than they are today, so that's my update.
Great, thank you.
I was involved in a secret back meeting, and I also did enjoy the high school nights of Wednesday and Thursday with the concert and the awards night. And speaking of another big night, we do have town meeting a week from today at 7:00.
Exciting. All right, and I just want to mention, too, that Beth and I did attend Arbor Day.
Oh.
Forgot about that, because we had so much going on, too. We had at Mountain View and both Maple Shade, and again, they just do an amazing job there. The band was great, the music. We had a really fun time, and there was a big turnout at both the schools, and the weather turned out to be really well, so we just wanna thank.
And just to add, when the kids started singing "America the Beautiful," it brought goosebumps. The whole school did it.
Yeah.
At both schools, and that was pretty impressive.
That's neat.
Yeah, they did a really nice time. And then I also wanna mention that I saw Mark Macarini the other day, and they had, the high school had their staff versus student soccer game, and the students won.
Just barely.
Yeah. But Mr. Macarini felt that, you know, they had so many kids there that are really good players. I think he said, like, two of them are going on to play, like, Division 1 already, and so they really had their challenges.
I think it was quite a challenge.
And that's all I have to add. And at this time, we have the opportunity for visitors to address the committee. Seeing none, we're going to move on. We have presentations. We're gonna start with the Superintendent's Report, 5.1.1, the adoption of revised policy manual. Do you wanna get it started?
Thank you. Sure. We have Pat Carrera here, from the Mass Association of School Committees, who has been working with us the past, I guess now, three years.
Three years, I think since I've been on.
When this first started, our revision of our policy manual, Pat had let us know that it's usually a three-year process, and she was incredibly accurate with that description.
She's the expert, right?
So, tonight, we have the final version, the print version.
She put it in here so that I wouldn't mess it up, or drop it, or whatever, because it's in the back of my car. But anyway, this is your manual.
So, we should mention that Beth and Bill, you guys have worked long and hard on this. You are a subcommittee.
Lot of hours.
So. Are you in tears now?
Yeah.
We'll be a test on the contest later.
This was a, what is it?
Labor of love.
Labor of love. Thank you very much.
It was a good, there were some good sessions.
Music, something, some lights.
I should've, but I, I'm sorry, I didn't.
And Beth, I just love that it's called the adoption, so you get to adopt your try, it's like.
There's the CD.
Everything in here is going online.
Mm-hmm.
It's in the process right now. So, I don't know, maybe another couple weeks, it takes them a little bit to get it there. It's here.
Okay.
Okay? And this is a PDF.
Are we able to duplicate that CD?
Yes. You can.
Is online gonna be a PDF? It's gonna be searchable, correct?
It's gonna be searchable.
Not a PDF.
No.
Thank you.
Because I can't.
But, but, but you, nobody can change what it says.
Right, though we can search on top.
You can search by keywords.
Yes.
The point for you to remember is, inside here is, it explains, I think you all have this. Did I bring you this?
Doesn't look familiar.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I've never seen it.
It's just a guide to tell you how and what and where. And the beginning of this also tells you how and what and where, and what it means. You know, like, the blue, everything that's blue in here is a law, so you'll know. When it goes online, if you click on MGL, it'll take you to that law.
That's cool.
If you click on the CMR, it'll take you. That's the link to the CMR. Also, federal, no child behind, whatever else they decide that they want us to comply.
You say it's online, it'll be on our site, Mr. Smith?
Right, it'll be both on our site and their site.
School committee's site?
Yeah, if you go to our website, and you look under online policy manuals, you're gonna be there.
Okay.
And anybody, anybody in your community can go there and do that, okay? Or they can go to your website and go on it. Because in order to get to ours, you have to have a password.
Okay.
And you have that.
It'll link right through, once we get it established up online. If you were to go down to take a look at some of the policies, our manual will be the same as those manuals that are up there, you know, how you search, and you can use keywords, you can use, you know, words that you think might be in the policy, and it'll, it'll bring you, just like, say, a Google search, it'll give you hits in that policy manual for those words.
Okay, perfect.
If you don't know what you're looking for. Important thing is to remember how it's divided, and it's A through L, and what each of those sections deals with. You know, like, A is, is just regular foundations of commitment, B is school committee. So, if you're interested in that, you know, F is facility, G is personnel, I is instruction. It's kinda easy. J is students, and J is probably the biggest piece in here, all right?
You're doing nightmares.
We know that.
Enjoyable few months.
Yeah, it was.
Yeah, we, we just love the presentations every month we had for the policies.
Did you, I'm so glad.
It was really riveting, yes.
Did you have music?
A little bit.
Anyway, this is it.
The next time we will.
It's finally done.
Cool.
Any decisions that you make, any changes that you make, you just send this to us, to us, and we will update it for you. So, your policy manual will always be updated.
Thank you.
It's up to you to update what you have on your website.
Okay.
So, this is a good thing. I, I, it was great for me. I mean, I enjoyed my time. You know, everybody was really.
Thank you, Pat.
They were so excited, I can't even tell you how excited they were. Every time they saw.
It is a wonderful thing, because when I first got on the school committee, you know, I had one disc that said one thing, and a manual that said something else, and I had no clue what I was doing to begin with.
Right.
And so, this at least, we have no more excuses.
This has brought everything together.
Right, it had to be done, and.
It had to be done.
Yeah.
And if you have a question about a policy, call us. I mean, if you're waiting for something. Right now, we're almost done with fingerprinting.
Right.
Steve Finnegan has it.
Oh, good.
Plus Steve.
Steve Finnegan's the attorney, he's our attorney.
Steve Finnegan is our attorney for MASCE. He checks all of our policies, so he has it, and he's just putting the finishing touches on it, so. It's legal within everything. But I will tell you, it's, it probably, I know, it does complement QUORI, so, so it'll, it'll just flow for you, okay? These are all the new gender identity, all of that's in here. I mean, it's just huge. So, this is, this is a whole thing.
Yeah.
And I must tell you that I have used your field trip policy over and over and over again, you know?
Don't tell me now.
I firmly believe that you, you know, you steal from the best and you plagiarize the rest, so. I just figured.
We heard that, we heard that a few times. Thank you for all your help through the, the three years.
My pleasure.
Thank you very much.
I'm gonna miss you guys, I don't know.
Well, I'm sure we'll have to start again. I think, Ray, it's time to.
We'll have to start again. We don't start again.
We just update.
Who do you want me to give this to?
I would take it.
Okay.
So, now the stack's sitting in the corner, I can.
Get rid of that.
I can recycle.
Yeah.
Yeah, please, if you have an old policy manual, throw it away.
Yeah.
Because we don't want you going from that to the, to the old one.
There's no.
Because you have one, this is the official book there.
This was a, this was a lot, would you like this bag, too?
That would be wonderful.
Would you like this box, too?
Sure. So, you don't have to take anything with you.
I keep, I have enough.
Keep it preserved in a bag and a box.
That's right.
These are our new bags, you know, for every day, everything that you wanna do.
I like those kinda bags.
And it doesn't say, with all due respect, so it doesn't say MASSE, it just MASSE. I just wanted to know.
You should have top billing there.
And the next time I come, I'll bring this. If I thought I would.
The umbrellas are nice, too, Pat.
Great. Did you tell them about your?
I didn't. I visited MASCE office, and it was a rainy day.
It was?
My, my three girls, my wife and two girls, and Pat was generous enough to outfit us with umbrellas for that.
No charge.
No charge.
Under $50.
That's right. We're good.
Yeah, we're good.
We're good.
Bags under $50.
Yes.
Absolutely, absolutely. Even if you combine it, I'm sure it's under $50. With the umbrellas.
Yes.
So, thank you all so much.
Thank you. We really appreciate it.
And, and thank you, Rich. Rich was a great, he was my, my go-to person on an issue, and then we solved it, so that was a good thing, so I appreciate it. So, thank you, enjoy your meeting, enjoy your summer.
Yes, you too.
Thank you.
Your, your college.
Thank you.
That's exciting. My granddaughter's graduating Sunday from college.
Wow.
Yeah, I'm like, I don't know how I feel about that. I'm happy.
You'll be good.
Fine.
It's good stuff.
I'm happy.
Yes.
Thank you, Pat.
Thank you, Pat. Bye now.
Have a good night. Okay, so we do have to make a motion on the adoption of the revised policy manual.
I move that we adopt the revised policy manual as presented this evening.
I will second it.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further review?
Can we, Gordon, if we could just, aware of parents, once it's available online, somehow, what are our applications that they can do, the searches and such?
Sure.
That way, folks know.
It may take a little bit longer than a couple weeks.
Okay, yeah.
What a lot of this year was, was back and forth with their office, MASCE office, around just different notes that were in the book, you know, as Pat would bring every working session, her policy book, and we'd be taking notes back and forth, and so there was double checking, okay, what was finally voted on at school committee? So, I'd be checking minutes, sending that back, and anyway. So, she said, once you adopt it, you know, here's all the work we've done, then it'll take, it could take, she said, 90 days, but I'm hoping it's more like 60 days.
Sure. No, whatever it is.
And then we'll, we'll certainly, maybe send a few, connect that zone.
Can we get a copy of the?
Yes, we'll get this copied.
And whatever the thing in the front is there, so we know what we're looking at.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Very exciting, Jesse.
It is exciting.
So, Bill had made the motion, Beth had seconded. Thank you for the discussion. Anything else? No? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, that carries forward, 5-0. Thank you. And then moving on, we have 5.1.2, update on Title I review.
Thank you for your first change.
In, in your packets, you have a letter coming from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, specifically from a gentleman by the name of Matthew Pacos, and it's regard, it's addressed to Ms. Anir, who's our Director for Curriculum Instruction and Assessment, and she's our lead person in Title I. So, she was the person who helped organize and facilitate for the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, the coordinated program review of everything we do with the Title I grant. And so, I included this in your packet, because anytime you have a coordinated program review, it's very rare that you receive a letter back that says, not only are we impressed, you have no follow-up.
Yeah.
And that's, so that's, not only do I wanna compliment Ms. Anir for all her hard work, but does everyone in the district who's involved with our programming that receives funds through Title I, it's just very impressive to receive something like this, and so, a lot of kudos goes out to the hard work of people throughout the district. Actually, one of the people who are doing the coordinated program review, generally they'll do interviews, and they look over files and so forth. Because we were doing things around our learning walks, the person asked if they could join, he could join a learning walk, and so he came on one of our learning walks with the leadership team, and saw how we adjust what we're doing based on what we're observing and the different pieces of feedback we might get from department heads in a given building. And I was pretty impressed with that. So.
Yeah, it was a really nice letter. Yeah, it was very nice to read that.
Is that informational, or, it's only informational, correct?
Right, it's informational.
Okay, well, thank you for that.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Okay, so we're gonna move on to new business. We have 7.1.
Okay, this is a little bit longer than the, than the letter that you received from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. This is a first draft, and I have to compliment Mrs. Saletti on all her work with this. You heard Mrs. Carrera talk about the new fingerprinting requirement, and that's something that's impacting all schools across the Commonwealth. Really, it started to impact us at the end of March, and it's going to change our policy, specifically File ADDA, which talks about the QUORI requirements. And so, Mrs. Saletti has worked very closely with a contact at the Mass Association of School Committees, as well as a contact who's coordinating out of Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, the, another acronym, so I apologize, the SAFIS program, or SAFIS program, which is the statewide application fingerprint identification service. I think that's, is it Dan Weiner? Who's the contact there?
Jeff.
Jeff. Okay, so, he, he has been working, Mrs. Saletti really is the key contact for the district right now for the SAFIS group, and so this is our first run at revising the QUORI policy as it was, and incorporating also the fingerprinting. As you've probably read through, you can see where we've stricken things and where we've added things, and I'm sure we can, this being first reading, we can add words and tweak different things as you look at it.
I have a question.
Sure.
Page two, very top. Do I understand that, for example, let's take the example, Mr. Thompson talked about the tennis courts being done?
Mm-hmm.
So, all those people who were working for the company, that, that's, whenever they got tennis courts, all have to pass this?
Well, actually, the tennis court work is gonna be done during the summer when we don't have students.
Okay, but let's say it's being done.
If it was done during the school year, if we feel that there's a good possibility that they will have access, unmonitored access to students.
Right.
Then, yes, then we would need to run QUORIs and fingerprints on them. I think in years past, we have, depending on where the project's going on, we have run QUORIs.
QUORIs.
So, now, what we're gonna have to do is work with the, basically, the contractor to make sure that people are also doing fingerprinting.
Wow.
Now, is that gonna be part of the bid process? Because that's gonna cost a lot.
Um, that's a good question. It might be a question we have to refer back to.
But would.
They'll probably include any costs in the process.
Well, Will, I wonder.
Because they'd have to do them for different schools if they, sorry, though.
Right.
I wonder if they're approved vendors, if it'll be part of whatever the approval process is, if we go back, take it one step further back. I don't know.
That makes sense, Bill, but.
Yeah, well.
But their employees may change.
Their employees, right.
Right, but it's just, you know, like, our employees will change, so it's, you know, there's a policy there that, you know, I don't know, we'll have to see how it all evolves.
I know.
I mean, I suppose if they've already, if a contractor has already had their employees go through this fingerprinting, what we are required to do is include a sheet that says the person is found to be.
Right.
Okay to participate in working with students in East Long Meadow Public Schools. That sheet can go with an employee who might switch to another school district.
Right.
And what happens if we have DPW on the property? It's like a Pandora's Box.
Right.
It is.
You know, because we're gonna have to have them all?
Yeah, because they're in the bill.
No, that's a good point.
You know, you get coaches, which I see.
I think our DPW workers would probably fall under sort of veteran staff, so we have some time to work them through. Right now, the first people this is hitting is anyone who is hired July 1, 2013 onward. All our veteran staff, we have to start working through between now and, I think, 2016, and get them accomplished. I've gone through, a few other administrators have gone through, we've started to get most of our new staff through. They have a deadline of June 15 to complete this and get us the paperwork, and some of the ELEA officers are now starting to go through, just so everybody gets some familiarity, and they can then spread accurate information to people who have to go through it.
This is the first reading, correct?
Yeah, just the first reading, so take it home.
This might require more than.
Right, read it some more.
May take a few more questions.
Take a reading, a few.
Also, I think I'd heard that the collaborative is going to be getting set to do the fingerprinting.
The collaborative was approached by the state to become an agent. As far as I know, they're working through the logistics of it, but they probably will take it on as a central location, which will.
They might even, they might have a, they're thinking of getting a unit or the fingerprinting thing where they can travel with it.
Right.
Maybe they go to districts.
Right, we're talking, you know, there's a number of proposals before the board right now. Nothing, nothing concrete, because Cheryl Decoto, who is the head of Human Resources, is actually the point person on this, and she was the one that was approached, and she hasn't even gotten the full proposal to bring it to the board yet. But it is something that they will probably take on, but it's just all the details haven't been ironed up yet. But as it evolves, I'll let everybody know.
And what about when you have, for instance, you have speaking language, speech and language, or any type of outside service that comes in? They are not quarried, but.
Yeah, any of our at-will would have to, generally, if we have not hired them as an East Long Meadow employee, then we sign some type of contract with them, and so they would have to, because they would have direct contact with students. The challenging one, and this is where the MASCE policy will be of great help, is these schools are, and some of the preparation schools, preparatory schools, are in somewhat of a panic, if you will, because they have student teachers that are already committed to start with, in the fall, with different districts. We have a few here, and they're students, you know, they're college students, and they're going to have to probably bear the cost of getting the fingerprinting done before they can start.
But that's just a one-time thing.
It is a one-time, it's a one-time charge, but it's not something that they.
No, I know, at the beginning, right.
There, I had a talk with Glenn Kuchar a couple of weeks ago on this subject, and there's a proposal before the Board of Higher Education in this state to include as part of the initial licensure, the fingerprinting process, so that it can go with you, no matter where, you get it done once, it's part of your license, initial licensure requirement, you can take it with you wherever you go in the state, whatever district. So, there is, they're trying to simplify it, it's just going to take a long time before it actually happens.
In the first paragraph, including tax cap drivers and children, it just may have missing the parentheses at the end.
Thank you.
And then, just a substantive question regarding File A D D A, the actual questionnaire. Are we, it's part of the policy, right?
In terms of the attachment?
The questionnaire, employee may be asked a volunteer series of questions. It's the last page.
Right, it's the attachment of questions. We can put that into our application. Those are the questions that we can, there are questions there that we can insert on an application, and questions that we are not allowed to insert or use on an application.
So, my question to that is, then, is conviction of a felony disqualification of employment?
It really depends on the information and what exactly, you know, felony.
Because that's the whole point.
Right.
We're trying, it's a criminal record, so will we disqualify anyone who's been convicted of felony? I don't, I'm not judging that, I'm just asking that question. Before we're just asking the question, is that the reason why we're asking it, I guess, is my question.
Yeah, I think that the reason why is, you know, obviously, we would be looking at, we should be getting information back that would be.
On what we're allowed to disqualify candidates for? Is that?
Right.
A felony maybe, any felony maybe, disqual, automatic disqualification, or is it up to the school district?
I think it's up to the school district. It's not automatic disqualification.
And same to the five-year parameter regarding misdemeanors, anything within five years, it's again up to the.
It's up to the school district.
School district, with exceptions, though. It does list exceptions, though, so I guess we couldn't disqualify for those exceptions. Am I reading that correctly? Is that based on Mas general law, that questionnaire?
This, the questionnaire is based on Mas general law, but we will do more research on it.
Question two specifically asks about misdemeanors within the five years, the last, previous five years, but excludes list of five or six things.
Certain following misdemeanors, right.
So, I guess I'm just asking, what, once we gain information on this database, national database, what are we, what are we supposed to do? What are we required to do based on Mas general law? And what are we able to do based on our individual criteria as a school district?
We still have discretion over whether we've, you know, want to hire certain individuals. However, there are certain, obviously, felonies and even misdemeanors that we disqualify candidates.
So, and also, though, with that as well, we're required, then, if we are using criteria such as felony or prior misdemeanors to disqualify candidates, we have to then report that within 30 days? So, my question to that, again, is, I guess, and I know more research needs to be done, though, we need to know what we're able to disqualify candidates for before we disqualify them for answering these questions, I guess, or whatever the database might bring back.
Or accepting them based on an answer, too, right.
So, we'll, similar to what Mrs. Carrera said, we may refer that to their attorney, Steve Finnegan.
Okay.
And find out.
I think we need to have a clear understanding of, okay, well, if they have misdemeanor or they have something, what is acceptable and what isn't? And it needs to be, I think it needs to be written, what we would like to accept.
I'm sure there'll be some criteria coming out.
Well, there's a reason for this whole law, apparently, and we just need to know what we're required to do by law and what we're not allowed to do by law, based on the results of the, of the database, I guess, is what we need to.
Right. And if that question is an answer, we can always ask it, you know, as the information comes out.
Yeah, but as we get, so as we get results based on the database, so we, we're going to get some fingerprints, and now there's this national database, and so we start to get information as we do with the quarry, and so we look at the quarry and we say, no, we're not going to make this hire, and we're going to do a similar thing based on the national database of fingerprinting. I'm sure Mas general, or national law, it's not even Mas general law, it's federal law, right? Is this based on federal law?
I think it's based on federal law, but Mas, Massachusetts has adopted it as a state.
As Mas general law?
Yeah.
So, I'm sure it's stated as to what we're allowed to.
Right.
Disqualify potential employees for and what we're not, I guess, so we just need to know that, I guess, is my point. So, thank you.
All right, so this is just a first reading.
First reading, and I will see what we can get in terms of specific answers to those questions around questions we may ask on the application and information we may receive through the fingerprinting.
And I guess also, like the years, like, say, for instance, you're applying and you're, you're in your 50s and something was done when you were 15, is there a time limit on these things, depending on the severity of them?
I think it depends on the actual act that was committed. Certainly, that's where discretion comes into, comes into play now with quarries.
Okay. But right now, we kind of use our own discretion with quarry on a case-by-case basis, whereas, I'm assuming this is something you really need to have, like Rick was saying, tighter?
Right.
Okay.
You're going to get more information from this than we've received before in the quarries.
Okay.
There's a lot of questions, a lot of school committees and districts that are still, they're kind of.
Right, and so, but we're going to start getting information back as we start to go through the process.
We already have, yeah.
And so, once we get that, though, if we're required to act, we need to know if we need to act.
Sure.
So, if we have current employees and we receive information about current employees based on the national base, if we're required to act and don't act, I think that we could be in trouble for that.
Sure.
I'm just, we need to know what we need to do and what we're allowed to do, because we can't, we don't want to be accused of discrimination.
Right.
We're not allowed to discriminate for certain past actions.
Right.
So, no, thank you for that. I know it's in-depth, I'm sure.
And I still have the question on the volunteers, you know, what do we do with parents when they want to field trip?
And I think that's going to be part of.
Now, on some of the school, school districts, the school committee voted, actually voted not to fingerprint day-to-day volunteers and stuff, and to only fingerprint those that are actually overnight.
Might go on a field trip as a chaperone.
Well.
Right, chaperone.
It's fine, but if law, federal law doesn't allow us to do that, I'm not necessarily sure I'm comfortable with that. I would like to think we could do that, but we need, I'd like to know that we can do that, because if we don't do it and then we find out something later.
Right.
I don't want to see that we missed that.
True.
Not that I'm necessarily in favor of a national database myself, personal, on personal police, but it is what it is.
If the law is the law, right.
I, you know.
So, you'll have some follow-up work to do.
We've got some follow-up, thank you.
All right, so we're going to move on to 7.2, the MASCE voting delegate for the November joint conference.
Billy, in again, this year?
Sure.
I move that we appoint Bill Fornesecca, the MASCE voting delegate for the November joint conference, and.
Motion's been made and seconded by Rich.
As a backup?
I'll probably be there, yes.
I'm not done yet.
Yes.
And appoint Mrs. Marcy Vauter as the backup delegate as well.
I second it.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion?
This is my first rodeo.
All right, no further discussion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay. Hearing none, that carries forward, 5 to 0. Thank you very much. Okay, we're moving on to 7.3, the approval of the school lunch van. Terry, would you like to talk a little bit about that?
Sure. Our current school lunch van is a 1998 model with 120,000 miles on it and is having a little bit of difficulty. We spent a lot of money this year trying to keep it moving, so it's time for a new replacement. And we did do a bid. We sent out packets to many dealers in the area, but we did only get one bid. That was from Serat Ford of Agawam. The school lunch van is a Ford E350, eight-cylinder, looks very similar to the current one we have. And the total bid price was $41,458, so I would recommend that you approve that for that price.
And this, Terry, will be funded through the school lunches, and, but we're not looking to raise the school lunch fees currently to pay for it. There's, there's funding currently available for that.
They can handle this.
It's a three-year.
Three-year.
Payment schedule?
Yes.
And the current van, we will do what with?
It was part of the deal, it was a trade-in, they're going to take it away.
Okay. Are we, just in terms of clarification, is that, are, do we have to, and I know the selectmen do this, so I'm asking the question because they do this. Anything they have, they have to declare as surplus, so anything they're not going to use anymore, are we required to do that? I know we trade in school buses, though, so this isn't the first time.
Yeah, now we trade in school buses.
So, we're allowed to just trade in flat out? Okay, thank you.
All right, anyone want to make a motion for the approval?
I move that we approve the Serat Ford bid for the 2013 school lunch van.
Motion's made.
A second.
Seconded by Beth. And any further discussion? All right, hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. All right, hearing none, that carries forward, 5-0. And I wish you luck, I can't wait to see a new van driving by.
Thank God.
Who painted the last van?
Yeah, I don't know.
Are they still around, paint the next one? I think it's neat, it's handcrafted paint.
Well, it is, and now it's probably all done digitally and.
Yeah, certainly.
That thing had so much rust on it, driving by. All right, so moving on to 7.4, the job description for transportation manager. Would you like to fill us in on this a little?
Sure. This is somewhat of a bittersweet revision.
Yes.
Since we have accepted the resignation of our current transportation manager, Ms. Tracy Gamble, she has chosen to move closer to her family, which is a great decision for her and for her family, but a sad situation for us, because we lose an excellent transportation manager at the end of this fiscal year, June 30th. So, as we look to post this position, we have made in bold a few revisions to the job description, and wanted to make sure that we brought that in front of the entire school committee to get the approval and have that in place as we start our search process and our interview process.
Now, you worked with Tracy on updating this?
Absolutely. We worked with Tracy, we also, Tracy is the current president of the Mass Association of Pupil Transportation, and so she's worked with her colleagues there, and will continue to work with Tracy and those colleagues to make sure that our interview questions are the sharpest that they can possibly be, and that our process is as sharp as it possibly can be.
The updates are pretty.
Pretty minor.
Yeah. So, I know that she comes in quite early sometimes in the morning, but we don't specify within the job description the hours.
No, it actually is in the contract.
It's in the contract.
It's in the contract, and so that's something certainly that we not only have been working with Tracy through the years on what's the right flexibility in that schedule, and so we're going to need to take a look at that. Certainly, with an outgoing transportation manager who knows the job well, knows the drivers well, knows the system, the bus yard, how LPVUC works with us, the better we can be in specifying how the transportation manager should think about not only interacting, but what their workday encompasses, I think the better off it will be for anybody who begins in that position.
Right. And historically, we haven't asked specifically for a class two school bus driver license. I think we've had transportation managers without the school bus driver's license, but I know Tracy has one, it's quite helpful.
Right, it's extremely helpful.
Are we?
Could we put preferred, like, not necessary, but like.
Or they have to get it in a certain amount of time?
And that's kind of the point I was getting at as well.
Sorry.
No, no, I think you, you, you something else, that's perfect. I'm just, because I know we've had them in the past without, but I know that it's helpful, but will we not have a large enough pool necessarily of candidates if that's required?
Yeah, I don't know how big the pool will be, but I think that we will get some qualified people. I mean, you know, we hate to see her have to get in a bus and drive, but unfortunately, there are days that has to happen.
Right, right.
And if that person doesn't have that drivers or can't train the drivers, which is also part of our, that we change.
Good point.
You know, I mean, it really is, you know, imperative, I think, that they do have their license.
I mean, her ability to train the drivers has enabled us to have subs at the ready, which then keeps her from driving.
Right.
Yep, no, that's reasonable, I think.
Okay, so, do you want to make a motion for the approval?
I'd make a motion to approve the job description for the transportation manager.
Okay, motion's been made by Rich.
I'll second it.
Phil's second, any further discussion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Hearing none, that carries forward, 5-0. Excellent. Moving on to 7.5, policy EEA, student transportation services revisions.
Okay, this actually is in reference, not so much to the transition of the transportation manager's position, but it's just in a situation that I think does impact our parents, and we have a parent who had asked us to take a look at it, and we did. If you go, really, the only change that we've made, if you go to the second to last page of your packet, under B, where it says "school," do you see where I am? What we're looking specifically at is number two there around early release days. And number one has been in existence for a few years and seems to be working well. We did, before we brought this to school committee, check with our, specifically our elementary principals, because this is where it seems to happen the most, where a child, due to an emergency situation, may need to take a different bus. And so, that's been going on right now, where notes from parents to ride a different bus or have a different drop-off, deliver to the principal's office, and then double-checked with the transportation manager. That has been going on and seems to, right now, be going well, and.
Is it allowed that, you're saying?
At the principal's discretion, right. And it has to be an emergency situation, they have to have something, right, you know, something with their family, why they have to switch buses, not, you know, the playdate. And so, it happens very infrequently, and the principal said that when they do get it, they are able to satisfy the situation, they contact the transportation manager, they make sure they know which bus driver, transportation manager alerts the bus driver, the dismissal routine, you know, homeroom teacher and so forth, everybody gets alerted. If they can't do it, then they get immediately back to the parent, you know, soon after the school's started and let them know.
What would be the reason they couldn't do it?
I don't think they've had a reason why they can't do it, but if there were a reason for, you know, substitute driver, whatever it is, I don't, no. So, that's been working well. With that working well, we took a look at the early release day situation where, you know, parents, given that we do have a few early release days throughout the calendar, and that does change dismissal and coverage, so to speak, or childcare for parents as their children are coming home at an earlier time. So, what we looked at, because you have a number of different agencies or organizations that offer after-school care in East Long Meadow, we looked at not only getting notice a few days ahead of time, so we can see if we even have a stop that goes to that particular organization, and, you know, is this feasible? And so, that would take some time, longer than it would do necessitating an emergency situation. So, we put two days in there. The bus stop has to already exist, we're not going to create a bus stop. And so, in some cases, we have children that go to these organizations all year, that is their bus stop, you know, and that's set up ahead of time as they sign up for the bus. So, if that's the case, and we can accommodate, it's not overcrowding or making an unsafe condition on the bus, then the principal and the transportation manager would approve that, and then that can happen for that early release day.
So, can I have my daughter come to my sister's house on an early release day? Is that, that would be acceptable if I gave two days' notice? Is that within the policy?
In this case, I think we're talking about childcare organizations or businesses, so where we would have a bus stop, if we have.
That would be the only case we would have, if it was a.
Right?
Correct.
It doesn't say it.
Well, I mean, yeah, I mean, I think if there's an existing bus stop.
I mean, I guess if there's an existing bus stop.
Right, so my nephew gets off the bus.
Yep, then we could do that.
As long as it's on, you know, on that bus route for that school.
Right, so they're both at Meadowbrook.
Right.
My daughter could ride on my nephew's bus to my sister's house on any release day, as long as they give a note two days ahead, and there's a room on the bus.
And there's a room on the bus, and you already have that existing bus stop.
And we can do that logistically and safely?
The key is the existing bus stop and that we haven't overcrowded the bus, yeah.
Don't the buses crowded to begin with, on some of these routes?
It really, it depends on the route, yeah. So, in some routes, it might be harder to do than other routes.
Did the leadership team see this?
Yes. That's where the two days came from.
All right, well, again, it's a first reading. Okay, sorry, Beth.
Yeah, I guess I'm, all right, we have a new transportation manager coming. All right, I don't know if this is the best year to change something like that.
But a lot of this is already happening, I think, Beth.
It's already, as far as.
As you go through the principal, the building.
Number one is already happening, and so the transportation manager has less time to come up to speed on that, because that would happen day of.
All right.
And that's infrequent. What the principals stress to us is that it rarely happens.
Yeah.
But when it has happened, they've been able to accommodate. Two is really the new area.
And if it becomes unmanageable, then we might have to take a cycle.
Right.
Right.
The hardest part is Maple Shade in Mountain View, because not all bus stops are on this, on each set of buses.
Right, we would only allow what, where the buses are already stopped.
Currently stopping.
From those specific schools.
There's criteria that's already there.
And so the classroom teacher would have to be notified, right, because they would have to send the kid.
Right, and that's, that would be the principal's job.
The bus driver would have to be notified, they have an additional student that's getting off at a certain stop, and then it'll be the bus driver's responsibility to make sure that child gets off at that stop, right? So there must, there must be a checks and balances system.
Yeah, they're very good. And the kids, I think, are good at knowing.
Yeah, I just worry, but, you know.
No, you want the adults to, you want the adults to.
I don't know, I guess I feel that we, everybody knows when the half-days are gonna be, before the school year starts, and I just feel this is an awful lot of fussiness, why can't the person who is getting, house is getting dropped off on, why can't they pick them up in car line that day? The car line thing's been established, it's good to go, we know how it works, you know, if, I guess I feel now we're playing games, we're putting the bus drivers in a situation that, I don't know if that's, that, are they gonna be happy with that? You know what I mean, they, they may have issues with this, too.
Well, I mean, from their standpoint, the stop would have to already exist.
Yeah.
And we'd have to meet safety criteria in order to put that student on the bus. So as long as we haven't overcrowded, they're gonna stop at that stop anyway. The one piece that would be added is that they need to make sure, okay, this student got on my bus at the school, and this student needs to get off my bus at this destination. That would be the one change.
That would be the key.
Right.
Being successful is the individual bus drivers, making sure that happens.
Right.
And then we don't even know, I mean, you could find that there's gonna be more than one child on any given bus on a half-day, because the kids are gonna be like, playdate, you know what I mean?
Yeah, but then again.
And now you, they're gonna have five kids, and they're gonna have to, if they all fit, that's great, but then they're gonna have, now you're asking a little too much.
And to that point, is it then become a first-come, first-serve in terms of space and how, and then, so if someone sends it in three days instead of two, I, that's a good point, that's something to think about.
Yeah, I mean, if it does become like manageable, I mean, it's a good point, yeah.
You know.
It certainly is a convenience, and I think it would be useful if we're able to do it logistically.
Because half days are a pain.
Make sure we can do it safely.
Yeah, yeah, let's make sure that we're the policy setting here, I mean, I think the leadership team are the ones that are gonna have to kind of make this work.
Yeah.
All we can do is, you know, whatever we're comfortable with, and then send it out, if there's negative, then we, it comes back and we, you know, we deal with it.
This is a first reading, though, and so we can take some of that, these comments back, we can talk with Ms. Gamble to make sure that we're double-checking those pieces, and then we'll bring it back in the next agenda.
All right, we have 7.6, is the memorandum of understanding with ELEA.
I make the motion that effective July 1st, 2014, the East Long Meadow School Committee and the East Long Meadow Education Association, highest collective agreement that runs from September 1st, 2012 to August 1st, 2015, Appendix B.
Great, motion's been made.
Second.
Beth's seconded, any further discussion? All right, hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. All those opposed, nay. Hearing none, that carries forward, 5 to 0. And again, we're just, our last time to thank Aria.
Thank you, Aria.
Enjoy the next week.
That's right.
Oh, my gosh, I'm so stressed out. I saw you all drunk up today, by the way, so.
Oh, did you?
Yes, I did.
Oh. So we took the pressure off you, so if you don't make the last meeting, we understand, because you'll be graduating before the last, right? Wouldn't you be?
No.
But it's still, you'll have lots, lots to do.
Last day of school.
So that's why we did everything tonight, so again, don't feel pressured, life gets in the way now.
Okay, thank you.